Hello my dear viewers, this is Deepak Jain here in English Mania and today as usual it is going to be the podcast session in which we are going to ask each other the questions, any question that is coming or that is striking in our mind we would be more than happy to put it across and we would be happy to answer it. So right now because we here we have Raj, your name is Raj right and your name is?
Jyoti.
Jyoti, Jyoti Chaudhary right?
Yes sir.
Okay, so here we have these two good people and it is going to be the separate session, that is why you are isolated from other people, okay? And this the benefit of this separate session is that you will be getting more and more chances to speak, right? So here I first actually before I begin the session, I want that you to begin with your introduction one by one. So first let's begin with Jyoti then I will come to Raj, okay?
Sure sir. Hello friends, my name is Jyoti Chaudhary, I live in Biharjikulchukh Colony near Srijivaba Hospital. There are five members in my family, my parents, me and my two younger sisters. One sister is three year old and the second is five years old. Regarding my qualification, I have completed GCOM and AMPOM also in 2022 and my aim is to become a bank PO.
That's lovely, now I must listen to Raj then I will come back to Jyoti, okay?
Everybody my myself Raj Bogle, I am from Tengsura and my father is an army so I am living in Tengsura Army Camp. So in my family there are, I have a joint family, so there are only twelve people but right now in my, it's my family with me and my cousin brother and my brother, my mother is living, my father is posting in Leh Rata. So basically we are from Rajasthan, Bradford, Kure and we are here for our posting because of my aunt for posting, that's it.
Okay, now I want Jyoti that you to talk about your aim, what did you say, what do you want to become?
I want to become bank PO probationary officer in government bank.
Now the question is that why did you choose to be a PO in the bank, why not any other field?
Okay, first of all it is my interest because of interest in bank PO. I have visited many times in bank and the environment of bank that impressed me and also means we do not suffer anything there, we have all the facilities like the AC, we have to sit on the chair, there is no workload, there is no risk of job, so or most important because of my interest. Because I do not want to go in any doctor, do not want to become these, I have fear of all these things. So I won't, I choose this area.
I chose.
Chose that area from safety point of view and because of interest.
Okay, most of the girls actually love to choose joining either the bank or the, or as a teacher, they wanna serve. So what is the reason behind that, why do most of the girls choose these two fields?
According to me, from the safety point of view, they choose these two things, either a government or like this. But nowadays they are choosing most this bank sector because the government form, the army's government vacancies has not been coming for a long time, so the people cannot wait. So bank will conduct exam every year, so that is why there is a tough competition in bank and all the people are running towards this job, they want to get this job.
As you told us that the chances of getting job in the bank are bright and the chances of getting job in the teaching line are bleak. So what is the cause behind it, I mean what exactly is happening in the country or in especially in our state? Is there any dirt, is there any dirt of jobs or is the government not willing to release the jobs? I mean to say who is exactly responsible for it?
Actually according to me, the government is not releasing the jobs. Means the people who are posted in government jobs in government as a government teacher, they are, they are aged now. It is a time to get them retired from that job so that the new generation can get that opportunity. But the government is not releasing them, means they are not giving opportunity to the new generation to come on this position.
Okay.
So they actually there is a vacancy there but they are not willing to release that. They are satisfied with this old generation.
Okay, so Mister Raj on this, I mean what's your opinion, do you agree with it, I mean is the condition the same?
Sir, no sir, I am not agree with, not fully agree with you. Because government was not responsible fully because people are not qualified to become a government, government servant. Then also you know, they are not well educated. As you can see, most of the people are can take the graduation but they don't know about their, their subject, you know, their basic things about.
They lack skills.
Yes sir, they lacking skills and their communication skills also are not very well. Government wants to, the people like cream and they can speak, speak and do anything. In India the people want multitasking people, not of single type, so that's why I think government not releasing and taking the.
Mister Raj, I want you to talk about your tenure in English Mania.
So my tenure is to become to clear ASV exam.
Now here English Mania, how much time have you spent?
Okay.
That's, that's what the tenure is.
Okay, so I basically spent twelve days.
Twelve days?
Yeah.
And Jyoti, what's your tenure here in English Mania?
I have completed twelve to thirteen days.
Twelve to thirteen days, okay, still then how do you sound so confident when you speak in English? Although I know you wanna be more confident, right? But still right now, I mean even after spending such a short span of time, you have gained a kind of a confidence. So I mean how, I mean in what direction are you working to, to gain this much of confidence that you have by now?
Actually in within these few days, I am getting some confidence and not some, I have got many much confidence.
Big confidence.
Big confidence and it will be continue means if I continue, if I continue to come here, it will increase day by day. Because in this short time if I get such a confidence then if I continue to come here, it will be bigger with the time.
It will augment.
Augment with the time.
Right, and Raj, I mean within in this tenure of yours, how much I mean improvement or I mean how was your experience and how did you feel here? What was your experience?
Sir, basically I am a introvert person, I am not talking with people's kindly and easily. And actually basically the girls, I can't talk with anybody in my life, so much. But in English Mania, I can open myself and I can talk with other people, anybody, it's my aged elder, younger, I can talk with everybody. So my hesitation was going little by little, but basically I have only have twelve days but I can see that I can speak.
I have twelve days or you have spent twelve days?
I can spend twelve days, but I can see that I can talk with everybody very, very basically and normally.
Okay, day by day it will increase, right? And in the last talk or in my last question that you disagreed with Jyoti, right, in terms of unemployment? So now actually Jyoti is supposed to answer you and I must listen to Jyoti's views now, right, what does she have to say?
Okay, he told that the people do not have a complete knowledge, means they have a lack of knowledge, they are not have complete skills to get that job. Do you think that the old people who are on their post, who are on that post on government, teacher as a government teacher, do you think that they have much skills as compared to the new generation? Means nowadays the education and everything is developing, so the people have much knowledge as compared to the those people who already have that.
The new people are actually updated.
Yes, updated, so it is a time to get them retired from that job and so that.
According to her, they are getting new skills.
Yes.
Sir, basically then I am also a government school student, I am from KV. So in every year, the government teachers will have to upgrade it, there are seminar for five days. In there five days, the new skills, the new methods of teaching, they were learning, the old teachers are also learning their skills. But they, they also have the experience, the new people are, don't have the experience.
Now you can interrupt as well, right, yes? Yeah, if you disagree, you can interrupt straight away.
Actually in the last survey, I forgot in which year it was conducted, but in that survey, a survey was happened of a government school. In that school, the teachers, government teachers were found that they do not know the, means even the alphabets. Alphabets, they do not know how to read like Aman, Chamal, even it is found, how can you say that they are updating?
Or they are updated?
Updated.
Or they are getting, they are getting updated?
Update, yes.
Are they getting updated?
They are already update, means they know these skills but they do not.
According to her, they do not need a patient, they are already updated.
Yeah, in basically in the villages, the school in villages, they are not get much facilities in operation about. Because I can see in my village also, people are coming and not teaching anything, you know, they are coming and saying what do you want to do, do it, you know, I don't care. The people in village, the government not, actually the government was not seeing these types of mistakes in village peoples and so that.
So what is the solution behind it, I mean I mean because the problem of unemployment is there, right, so how can it be sorted out according to you?
Sir, for me, I think unemployment is actually the case of population also.
Yes, I heard it a lot, I mean from many people that they are blaming the population and even the government was blaming the population. So is population really the reason behind it, I wish that Jyoti to highlight it.
According to me, there should be a age limit of each job. So that after reaching that age, they, the old generation, they should be retired from that position and the this opportunity should be given to the new generation.
That's what you think, right?
All generation has already retired after the age of government, serving in government job.
Actually the time period of that retirement is too long, means the new generation cannot wait for that long time. They should be something early and pension should be given to them so that they also feel safe and the new generation also get that opportunity.
But now that OPS was removed and now that I mean the latest people will not get any kind of a pension. So do you like it or do you dislike it and if you dislike it then you also must tell that why the hell did the government do that? I mean what was the problem to the government to give the pension to the people, I mean because it used to benefit them in their old age?
According to me, if they are, they cannot control the population, so it is essential to give them the pension. Those people and to limit their age to each job and give this opportunity to the new generation. So that they will also not get unemployed, they will not remain unemployed and the old generation, they will also feel safe that they are getting enough pension so that they can run their house, means they can survive.
What do you have to say?
Sir, she says that people have to, the retirement time period is very long. Just tell me if a person who was in a government job is retired in the age of fourteen, he can also searching for a job, so he is also unemployed and the people are not sitting in a house and after sixty, after the retirement is sixty age, people are also searching for the government job and to get two pensions. So, so it's not the solution.
My father, actually I want to tell my father, he is in CRPF and he is around sixty. So this is a long time, means I am not telling to get, retire them at the age of forty, which is a young age. But there should be a, means if we cannot control the population, first of all if we can control it, so this unemployment will eliminated, will eradicate automatically. If we cannot control it, then it should be fixed by the government, means not at the age of forty.
The question is, when the population increases, then demand also increases and then the need is more, as more people are there. So let's say more students are there, right, if students are more, then more teachers will be required for them. So then the vacancy should be more not less, that's what my opinion is, so what do you have to say about it?
Sir, basically the population is increasing, so you are saying true, the, sorry, sorry. People, but if the vacancies are increasing, the people are working more, so we can't divide it the much population, we have much money to everyone, higher price. We can pay them higher price.
Actually I want to tell the, where the population increase, it increase from each part, means from the middle class, lower class and the upper class. So upper class people and the middle class people, they can afford education and everything for their child. But the people who are in the means poverty line, they cannot afford all these things. Those people, it leads to unemployment, means this increase unemployment according to me.
It increases.
It increases unemployment because they do not have a money to go to the school, to do all these things. So their mind, when they grow up, their mind goes through the stealing, doing bad work like this. According to, this means they cannot afford all these things.
Does it become unscrupulous?
Yes, according to me.
Okay.
Sir, in my opinion, if they can't afford to feed a two or three child, then why are they born two, three child?
Why did they give birth?
Yeah, why are they give birth for two or three child, they can probably give one birth.
Okay, so it is their mistake, not the mistake of the government?
Yes, actually I am also telling this, if the parents cannot provide them all the facilities, then why they are giving birth to three, four children? But they give, if they give this create problem, means they not think this things.
They don't think.
Sorry, they don't think these things, they give birth and even they do not have enough money to fulfill their basic requirements, this creates problem.
And as she said like the government, you know, can increase the timing or like that, so when government did it in Agniweer, they increased the timing like hell. So then in that case, would you support your own statement in that case or not, in the case of Agniweer? Agniweer scheme, do you know about that, four years, serving of four years was there?
Actually I heard but I do not have a complete information on it, so you can ask Raj.
Yeah, Raj will tell you, I want Raj you to just tell her about Agniweer scheme and give all the details.
So.
Then she will, let's see then whether she agrees or disagrees.
Basically in Agniweer, what happened, there first of all in previous year, suppose there are only thousand people are in the army, basically joining the army, but right now there are four thousand people were joining army because of Agniweer. And after Agniweer, it's the fifty percent people are confirmed, have a permanent job. Like two thousand people are confirmed, you know, those people have the permanent job.
Earlier it was only twenty-five percent.
Yeah, but right now.
Now government increased.
Yes sir.
And made it from twenty-five to fifty.
Yes sir, so.
And after how much time, four years, right, you should tell everything.
Yes sir, I am.
Means they are enrolled only for the four years.
Yes.
Then after that.
No, after that, you know, four thousand people, those who are joining army, the remaining them, the four thousand were permanently committed and two thousand were remaining, they will give, the government give them eleven lakh, you know, eleven lakh rupees and also the salary including the four years, so it was happened in the army.
Means we are dividing the people, some people are permanently employed in it and till the sum, they will get eleven lakh.
Yes.
And four years service.
Kind of retirement money because they would get retired at the, after, just after four years of tenure and they would get eleven lakh rupees and then their services will discontinue and remaining like twenty-five percent. According to previous statistics, the twenty-five percent, I mean whose performance is really nice, will stay. Otherwise rest of the people will be asked to leave.
Okay, means those who are selected now, if they have performed very well, their job is fixed, they are permanent, they get permanent job. And those who do not work good, they will be retired.
Yes, they will have to take the retirement after four years, you can call it like ATL, they will be asked to leave. So would you, would you like it or would you dislike it?
Actually.
And earlier that tenure was high, right, and how many years was it earlier?
Sir, it was for seventeen years.
Seventeen years, so from seventeen to four, they made it, so would you like it or would you dislike it?
Actually I cannot say properly that I like it or not, but my opinion is that if you, you, means the government conduct exam, then you give employment to them, so if they are capable of cracking that exam, so what is the need of checking it later? Means you can put all the questions in the first attempt also, so if they are able, they will get this job. If they are not able, they can join another job.
Do you agree with it?
Sir, no, I not, I, I, actually.
Be loud please.
Actually what happened in services, one soldier, the government also spending the money on the one soldier. So to make them a normal person to the one soldier and making them a gentleman. So basically in four years, people are not getting anything, it's a person choice, not government don't force anyone to join the army, to join Agniweer. There are the benefit of joining the army is in Agniweer, that you are wasting your full time for, and also some, something, you know, you can join army, you can improve yourself and you can also get the money, retirement money with you. And in our, in previous year, you can, they only recruit twenty thousand, two thousand people per year, but right now they are taking the extra two thousand people for, for their services.
They are hiring extra people to terminate them.
According to me, it is a time wasted.
How can you say that?
Means if the government, government can take the exam, through that exam, it can, means it can recognize that he is able to work here or not. Means of giving them employment, then after four years you retired them.
You kick them off, in other ways.
Yes, and after, if after four years they will not get the job, then they will go in means distress. Means, yes, if.
Once they had employed, then they will have to face that.
Yes.
Yes.
If they fail in this exam, means in giving this exam, so they can console themselves by saying that I will try for another thing.
Yes.
And these four years will know, will, no, means will not goes waste.
Will not go.
Waste, will not go waste.
Actually I answered that before, it's a choice of people, government not force anybody to join.
Government does not force.
Does not force anybody to join army.
Yes.
But basically it's benefit with the army also, you know, in army you can see the most of the people who are taking it for granted that one, I don't know. But our job is fixed, you know, if I am working or not, you know, I don't care about anything, you know, you can see.
So why is it not in every sector, so then that people to be concerned about the job, if it is good, if it is beneficial, then why not in other sectors? Please answer it, I mean relationally.
Because, because of the budget, government can't afford to do this in every sector because paying every, every year pays seventy thousand.
So don't you think that I mean government would train the soldiers for four years and once they are trained, so they would be actually terminated then? I mean, don't you think that then government will incur a great loss because they are actually terminating the, the trained people and after terminating the trained people, they would be hiring the freshers, so what sense does it make?
Sir, after terminating the people, government also give them a certificate to serve in army, that, with that certificate, the people can get another job easily, very easily.
No, that is not the answer of the question, you didn't understand my question, I mean they are, once they spend four years of tenure, they are actually trained. So now the government is terminating the trained people and hiring the untrained people.
Yes, it is a loss of government.
Government.
They have to give certificate, even the money, eleven lakh, we told eleven lakh and the, precisely the time, training.
Why, why did they train them then? They trained them to terminate them?
No sir, so I can understand your question right now, in future, suppose in future, if it's what, what happened between India and China, the India, the China population and the army is very more bigger, bigger than India. If there was, suppose there was, India was getting lost, there is a loss of peoples and we can use them, train peoples for fighting for nation.
Why would they use, I mean once they are terminated, why would they come back? Once they are terminated, so Jyoti, do you think they will come back then and why do they come back then?
No sir.
And they would actually engage in other jobs, they would, right here, they would dislike the government.
And even it will.
It's basically necessary.
If she can feel that, then they can also feel the same.
Means if some people after this termination, some people even die.
Yes, they commit, they commit suicide.
They may commit suicide, means if they do not get any job and they feel that we cannot make our career, they can suicide.
They can commit suicide.
They can commit suicide, so government is responsible.
Sir, no.
It will be responsible for that.
In army, the people will go and get brainwashed, the people will get brainwashed for killing someone, for kill our, for killing, for kill ourselves for nation. Now so people can't do anything like that because army person would train for every situation, for every situation and every time. You can see in Ukraine, the most of the people, the army was, their army was wiped out totally. But people who was trained, you know, by their army, the people are fighting for their nation.
Okay, so isn't there a difference between the army of Ukraine and India, I mean if I talk about with the number of the soldiers?
But sir, you can see the number of soldiers are increasing in China also, there are big differences in China and India. We don't have to compare, compare ourselves with Ukraine or Pakistan, we have to compare ourselves with.
So do you really think that Mister Modi or any government has done it considering this, you know, war, which would happen in the future? Just on the basis of the probability of war and such conditions which occurred in Ukraine, so do you think that, did they apply this? Do you really think that they applied this considering these points in their mind? Are you sure of their imagination?
Because government.
Are you sure of their imagination?
According to me.
So is he, is he just cooking up a story or it can be?
According to me, it is his imagination, I am not thinking, the government is thinking so much.
Can you show any statement of the government like this, because let's say in which government shows or government clearly stated that you know we are doing all this based on the probability of what you said?
Sir, right now I am not sure but I am.
Then if you are not sure of it, then why did you imagine it?
I am talking with my father and the seniors of my father and also the, also the, how can I say? I can also talk with my father's senior like.
Did you speak to them?
Yeah.
Did they reply the same?
Yeah, the all people are thinking about the same things.
So did they like it? Did they like it?
Yeah, all people like.
But many people are there from the army sector, they dislike it, I mean even one person is there, out, Rajesh is there from the army sector. So if you ask him, then we will confirm whether he likes it or not because many people who came across me, then they actually clearly denied that, they clearly said, sir, we dislike it and we condemn it, we oppose it and they said like that.
Sir, suppose, sorry, it's my habit.
It's okay.
Suppose if we choose a person who was not capable of army, he was not that much sincere and we throw him in the ball, what will happen, he will die. By kill by the enemy is simply is easy to get out from the army because the CEO.
So do you think that is it the really concern of the government or is government really concerned about it before doing it?
Sir, there are many.
Or is it like English, like say kaha bata hai, every cloud has a silver lining, to jaise koi gurai bhi hoti hai to halang ke isme chhupi hu yeh acha hi to hoti hai. But is it like ki, isko karenge wahi chhupi hu yeh acha hi, to concealed goodness, I mean jo hum ek force fully nikalne ki koshish kar rahe hain. Ek to yeh hota hai and second is ki nahi government really thought of it, ab yeh to ek hua hai, dusra hum jabardasthi, mada force fully, hina? Hum ya actually trying to get good out of bad, to aisa to nahi hai, that's what my question is, so let's listen to Jyoti now about this.
Sir, actually in this job, first of all the government means providing job only for four years. The people, most of the people will change their aim, means if they want to go in this, they will not go. Because after getting this, there is no security of this job. There is a risk means for the four years.
Many people have said, pey loonon ka yeh kehna hai ki ek jo patriotism, yani deeshbakti ki bhavana aati hai na, to aaya karti thi pehle. Because when they were actually secured and the tenure was high, now when the tenure would be low, to jo patriotism or jo deeshbakti ki feeling hai, that will not come. Come, so is it true or not?
Actually in this, there is a fear, there is no patriotism, it means they will remain in fear, what happened after four years?
What would happen?
What would happen after four years?
They would imagine that, so would they be feeling secure because the only benefit of the government job is the security, so what about this security?
And one thing, it will also means after four years, if they were eliminated, then they hate the government, even they will, they will act as a terrorist. They can, according to me, they can, because if they do not get any job, they can be terrorists.
They can turn into missile probe, like they would hate the mankind, government or like that, there is there any possibility of it? There is there any possibility of it? Do you think she is right?
Yeah, for some sector, she is right.
To some extent.
Yeah, to some extent, she is right. Because most of the people are in India or.
What are the great benefits of this scheme? Could you elaborate? What are the great benefits that you highly appreciate or admire?
Sir, a great benefit is uh the people, army gets.
Army gets?
Gets the more capable people, capable soldiers for their nation, to secure them.
Okay.
And those people who are uh were not able to uh serve in army after four years. They can, they they can be become a gentleman and become a goods assets for our future.
People.
Active people and are assets for us, army force of in future.
Okay.
And they got uh certi- certified by the army's army certificate to get any other.
So if they become the active people, then what will be the benefit? I mean, let's say, I I consider them active now. And those many active people are in the market available, so what would be the benefit of those active people? Could you elaborate or illustrate?
Sir, like, if you can see, in twenty case, there are more, most of the rate cases are increasing.
So those soldiers should be protecting the women.
Sir, they can protect uh themselves and they can increase, I can say.
Increase or decrease?
They can, so.
No, 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 no.
Jyoti doesn't agree, so let's listen.
No one can change the mentality of anyone, no one can change. Means the government is here, all the security, safety is here, history, these cases are increasing day by day.
So what he said doesn't make any sense according to you? What he said doesn't make any sense?
No, yes sir, if the PM, means PM is not taking any action, he cannot decrease such kind of cases. How the active soldier can decrease?
Such cases, so according to her, it doesn't make any sense.
Yes.
Does it make?
They can make their family environment good, not the society, means society, they will do what they want to do. They will not listen to a soldier.
And how would you imagine that onward basis, because she doesn't agree with that?
Say, she is thinking about right now, but I'm thinking about in future.
Okay.
For future, they are, most of the population were are highly trained and their mentality were very sharp and they will become a gentleman. So I'm thinking about future, right now, it's a it's a part of a life.
Do you think the old generation who means who are posted on this, who are posted on this coast? Uh they were not active at that time, means if they were active, these cases will be less according to you. You are thinking about the future now, so those who were posted earlier, they were not active. If they were active, then these cases will be less now.
Should have been less.
Have been less now.
But those people who were active in army. The mentality of army, I can precisely tell you. Uh army actually were, army person, my father also want peace. And they can, uh you can see uh where the army person will live. The well, the area was totally uh secured and peaceful area. Then you can see uh up uh near the army area and near any containment area, you never see any such kind of cases.
Such kind of nuisance.
Nuisance and because army person can know how to enter the things.
But these are the areas, army areas, these are not at every place, these are limited. And the rape case can happen anywhere.
Can happen, can happen?
Can happen anywhere. So these areas means these are limited, these are at some place and it can happen anywhere. How can you say that this can create peace only to that area, to that surrounding? But not to the whole city or to whole town.
If if every person was in the army and have the mentality of like army, there I think that there are no choices. But there are no such cases about rape cases like that, because in every, you can see every street and everywhere.
But can you actually, this is something that can you officially tell this to those soldiers? Because let's say if the soldiers happen to ask you the benefits, that what the hell the benefit is? So can you actually count this benefit and tell this to them? And do you think they will be satisfied? Because they would be thinking or let's let's let them imagine. That yeah, in future, we would be actually uh terminated. And then the we would be used to to protect the women from the rapists. So that is why the government has taken the nicest steps, because later we will be active. And active people will be there in the society, right? And we would be able to protect the women from the rapists. So just to protect the women from the rapists, is I mean, do you consider this step as a good good step? I mean, just to thinking of future, how will it benefit? So it will benefit or are you forcefully connecting it to the rapists? Because let's say if those soldiers happen to ask, so can you count this benefit or will they agree with this?
Sir, actually.
Let's say if I take it to myself, then I am yeah gonna join the army, I will be terminated after four years, then somebody tells me. That because after four years, then the benefit is this, then I means would be there in the market to protect the women from the rapists. So I'll be satisfied with that and I will really be uh protecting women and all like I would be uh, I mean. It is like a coincidence, I mean, if that rape would be occurring in front of me, although the rapes don't occur in front of anybody, right? Because it is it is like stealing in robbery, it is like. So rape is like the ro- or stealing, not the robbery. So have you seen any girl being raped, I mean publicly, that people are watching and the rapist is there, I mean, doesn't care for people or like that. It happens still free, over three, not over three. So that is my question, please, Jyoti, did you get my question?
Yes, I think active, active soldiers, they can do their job means on the border. And even he is telling that the some people who are not active, they cannot fight there, so they should be eliminated. Means if you are at that position, when someone is in front of you and is killing you. You will automatically get that energy to kill that, means if you are not active, you will be active at that time.
Yes.
So it is not means you should be active, active is every everyone, every soldier is active. If they are means if they found the mistakes in some people, so they can train them for two, three months.
They can't train them, they can train them.
They can train them for two, three months for extra months. Means not the elimination is not a good.
And even about those soldiers who will be terminated because of their non-eligibility. Is even if they are non-eligible, even if they are non-eligible, but still don't you think they would be far better than the freshers?
Yes.
They will be far better than the freshers.
Yes sir, but sir, actually what happened in Agniwe. Uh army was taking, army was taking two thousand people only, the those he can only. Only get permanent, permanent.
Yes.
Permanent, then what, then what he can, she can say then about two thousand people, those who are wasting their time.
So you mean to say now actually more people will get more chances?
Yes.
In the army sector, so that is why this scheme is beneficial, because now the more people will get chance, right? And earlier if government hires uh like previously, then the number of hiring would be less. And now it will be more, because the government has to terminate more than half of the people.
It is better to select only few people than eliminating them after four years.
Because. But according to him, the chances or the opportunities to get job in army would be more. So don't you think, I mean, that would the new generation be happy?
No sir, it is not.
If such be the case, then why isn't this new generation happy? We doesn't the generation know about its benefit, that because now we are getting more chances.
Yes.
So then still.
Still it is not happy.
Why is the new generation not happy?
They are against.
This is the question.
Yes.
Uh why did they go through the vandalism then? You know vandalism? To destroy, yes, destroying the government property like that.
They are not happy.
Sir, people are not thinking about that with their lax in my lax mind. Because people want the government job, if government give them a job.
You are forcibly means joining these points, yes.
Suppose government.
It is better to remain unemployed than getting eliminated after four years. Means now we can make our career in many things, but after getting elimination after four years. It means we just getting uh stressed, what to do now?
Right.
And if we got married in this time and having children.
And it is also the case of adaptability, you know, adaptability means? Adaptability means once they join the army, they would be adapted or they would adapt themselves. According to the environment of army, right? So their life has become like a soldier now. And after that they get terminated, so now what about that adaptability that they showed? And because they adapted themselves.
Yes.
It means they made themselves.
According to.
According to that condition, right? Now if they leave that, example now, I am in habit of teaching the students and I have adapted myself. And so many things I created, I did, I applied, and suddenly if I have to do something new. Then what about me or what about my experience of this teaching? In this, you know, institute, so if I happen to do something new, right? Then it would be absolutely new for me.
Yes, everything from the beginning, you have to start everything from the beginning.
Think of it, it's like a nightmare for me, it's very much intimidating, it is very much scary. And if I think of doing something very much different, which is absolutely new to me. Because I have adapted.
Yes.
Myself into it, so please answer this question.
So basically, okay, I say, the nature.
You have to accept it, according to me.
No, I am accepting the request now, which you are carrying. But I am not accepting that that.
Can't be.
He is telling that Agniwe, it should be, I don't say, it shouldn't be.
Actually, it should be, and the government plan, Agniwe, Jyoti, is all right, you know? It's right.
There are more, I mean, I'm sure, like, people who understand things. Top or the top, I see you.
Okay.
So they can think everything.
Uh is it unnecessary, I mean, when he says, he that the people in the higher authorities, in the administration? They have more wisdom than us, so I mean, looking but India is the democratic country, right? Democracy means, let's say if government does anything, right? The it has to be consulted with many people and all if all the people agree. If all the people get agreed, then the things can be applied, right? Because sometimes that somebody's decision may be wrong as well, that is the benefit of democracy, right? If many people disagree, even if the number of those people who disagree is less, even if it is less. But disagreement is there, then what is the benefit of democracy then?
Things are applied, sorry, pardon.
My statement is that, I mean, because India is a democratic country. So if even if let's say forty percent people disagree with this scheme or any scheme of the government, launched by the government. Then actually it should not be launched, because forty percent people are dissatisfied with it.
But democracy means agree of majority.
And and sorry to interrupt you, even Mister Rahul Gandhi clearly said in the parliament, that the moment we come in the regiment. The first thing that we will do is that we will remove this Agniwe scheme, we will throw it in the dustbin. Then how could he say that? Please tell me. And suppose this is very bad, then all the people will oppose Rahul Gandhi, but whereas people were happy by listening to this. Right, huh, he clearly stated, he explicitly stated in the parliament. That the first thing that we will do is that, as per our manifesto, we will throw this Agniwe scheme in the dustbin. They will trash it, why?
Sir, hmm. Can I say? If uh some, if you can see in our uh in our parliament or in our parties, opposite. Uh the every party was blaming each other, uh for if Rahul Gandhi do something, the BJP was saying that Rahul Gandhi doing wrong.
I know.
If Modi doing something, that Rahul Gandhi say doing wrong. Uh so they wants to be be, they want to uh win the election. Uh they are saying everything, Rahul Gandhi in Congress was saying, most of I think that we are making rules. And but in in the past, they are not doing anything.
No, actually a leader of from opposite party, from the Congress party, said this in the parliament. He said a statement, he said, you say that once, I mean, BJP party said. I saw this, I was clearly watching and he said, you say that, Agniwe scheme is very good. But he could not say that, he said that, he said that, he said that, it is very good. And we will continue with it, it is very good. That is it. I had seen it. Even I was wondering, I was expecting some good, you know, answers from that leader. But actually that leader actually broke off, it means he didn't speak anything, he broke off. Or he tried to dodge the question, became dodgy, that was the reality. So why, why so? Now Jyoti has to say something on it?
Actually, I want to say to him, he is telling that the party, they are antagonistic. Means they oppose each other.
They antagonize.
Antagonize. They can.
So that antagonism is always there.
Yes, it will remain.
It will remain there.
Yes, it will remain there, but the people, why they are opposing this? Why the people?
Yes, why is it antagonized? But why would people antagonize?
Means they can see their benefit, their loss, everything, so if the vacancy has increased, the opportunity has increased. Then why they are disagree with this?
Why do they?
Why do they disagree with it? Why they are not supporting the government? Means if they can see their benefit in it, means they have lots of vacancy now.
Yes.
More people can get. Employment.
If people simply say that previously what was going on was fruitful, was good. And we are satisfied with that, then then why don't they actually rejoice the people by actually undoing it? You know, why don't they undo it? Because people themselves say, let's consider the people wrong, you know? So if people say, let's die, right? Then die, right? Like that, I mean negatively, uh I'm talking. Uh but government can, because government is concerned about the votes now. So why is that, because when people are opposed and it also gives the risk to the government, then why is government taking this risk? Why doesn't, what was the need? I mean, what was the need to do it? Because what was happening earlier, they were satisfied, so what was the need to apply this or risk it?
Sir, for your answer, for your good question, I would really rather say. Uh people would like to drive a vehicle without helmet, why the policeman?
Uh is giving the penalty.
Giving the penalty, fine, people like to drive speedily for one twenty and one fifty speed. Why the why the police have any any of this concern about them? The people like 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 to do.
Okay, I can answer this, I can answer it. See, the wrong example has been quoted here, wrong is always wrong, right? Because earlier that people who are serving in the army for so many years, sixteen seventeen, whatever you said, right? So if it was wrong, then it it is always wrong, right? With not wearing the helmet is always wrong, it's not like that, it was allowed, now it is not. Getting the point, so you are quoting a wrong, wrong example and I I can refute it in in seconds. See, that earlier that scheme had been running, so there was nothing wrong in that scheme, okay, there was nothing wrong. So this is the case, and if not wearing the helmet is good, then it would always be good now. So it's not like that, earlier people uh didn't wear the helmet and it was okay, now it is not. That not wearing the helmet is never okay. Getting the point. Example, wrong is wrong, it is absolutely wrong. If somebody doesn't wear the helmet, so no need to actually debate on it, it is undebatable. But this scheme is debatable. So your example about that somebody is not wearing the helmet or let him die, I disagree with that.
No sir, I am not saying about wearing helmet is wrong, I am saying the penalty, taking penalty is wrong.
Honey, taking the penalty from the person who does not wear helmet is right. And it was always right, it is all.